This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call this Councilman order.
Would you stand as able and join me in this invocation this evening? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the mayor, administrator's staff, and the Sedalia City Council meet to discuss and make decisions for the betterment of our community and its citizens. We are thankful for their dedication and service. We also now ask protection for all of our first responders, police, fire, sheriff, EMTs, hospital staff, and all who work for our benefit, putting their own lives in danger. Bless them as they continue their difficult tasks. We are grateful for our military, who serves throughout the world to protect our country and who for 250 years has sacrificed life and limb to create and to preserve our constitutional republic. And tonight, too, we especially ask your blessing and service recognition of Lisa Bell, who is retiring from Sedalia Water Department after over 30 years' service. She will be greatly missed by the city, and we wish her very well in her retirement. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keeping us from harm until we meet again. All this we ask in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every peace and justice for all.
Only roll call, please.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus is absent. Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
And Bliss is absent.
No, here.
I'm sorry.
We've got a beautiful mugshot of him.
Do I see him now yet? Thank you.
Now, we have a special words. Lisa Bell, could you come forward to the podium, please? Ladies and gentlemen, sir. Everybody is home forever. Lisa, once this young lady, she used to work on your restaurant. Started working when you were fourteen. Fourteen, don't tell me about your fourteen. I think it worked a year after you graduated.
Yeah, I believe so.
Then came the work for the city water.
Eighty-four, yes.
Lisa began to cure the city as today and definitely July night, nineteen eighty-four, as she has cured the water department. And that's the responsible agent with purchase, process, utility payments, and providing customer service. She then again taken additional responsibility to doing some good people work and hopefully promote the decision of April, November, and September ninety-six. At that time, she assumed the responsibility of processing payroll for all water department holdings. Interestingly, around the same time, the department joined aboard the first computer, the trouble, which she recalls as initially being scary, but eventually led to such an improved efficiency to assist them break that chain or anything. Lisa's always gone above and beyond to do what needs to be done regardless of her role as an excellent team player. She'll be friendly miss, but yet we're all happy for her to reach out to reach this town still in her life and are glad now that the opportunity to slow down and enjoy the fruits of many years of service. It's great pride that we recognize you and your service and more so assess of the organization as direct result of your efforts and dedication. Thank you, Lisa, for all you've done for the city of Sedalia. And I know that, you know, this transition from, you know, three years, two years ago to make you.
Oh, yeah.
On the nation that is working.
Good.
And this is, you know, the continued service. I appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, you said, how can I pay my water bill now? All right. The word is that you've never paid them. So we have a motion for the municipal city council to move.
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
opposed? So we have a unfinished business. Chairman Andrew Dawson?
If you remember, on June seventh, twenty twenty-one, we had a meeting where we tabled an ordinance vacating the alley behind the Liberty Center. There was a property sale that occurred that we did not know about, so we needed to adjust that ordinance to reduce it by twenty-two feet. And then also, there were a couple of other kinks that need to be worked out, so we're bringing it back here tonight. Any council discussion?
I do understand that there has been a combined meeting and hasn't resolved, and we're good to go.
Call for the ordinance?
Bill number two oh two one dash ninety-one. An ordinance vacating the east-west alley between property located at one eleven West Fourth Fifth Street and one oh eight West Sixth Street and retaining permanent easements, utility easements through the alley in favor of the existing utilities.
Second reading.
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash ninety-one. An ordinance vacating the east-west alley between property located at one eleven West Fifth Street and one oh eight West Sixth Street and retaining permanent utility easements through the alley in favor of the existing utilities.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
That's all the unfinished business I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Andrew. We need a motion for the approval of the traffic advisory board.
No moves.
All fair?
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Finalest administration, Steve Bliss.
I was gonna ask you.
You guys handle it there.
Rand, can I take it?
Okay, sorry. Okay, so we keep up.
Rand, would you pull your mic down?
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. So first off, we are gonna get a financial update from Ms. Dawn, please.
You did promise a good one last night.
Yes, it is good. Well, as you can see, the sales tax is actually up thirty-three, almost thirty-three percent from last year. It is just astronomical. Kelvin and I had to check and double-check the numbers a couple of times, and it's real. Without the consideration of the parks' sales tax, we would be up twenty-seven and a half percent, still quite hefty for this time of the year. For the total of the month, if you take parks out of the equation, it's nineteen point three percent up as total overall of the tax revenue. Fiscal year-to-date, if you take the parks' additional sales tax revenue out of both last year and this year, we're up seventeen point two percent in sales tax and fourteen point five percent overall tax for the year, so just amazing news.
And again, remember, our budget really, our budget's two percent.
And also to further the perspective, this is really April fail. So if you remember, last year was April was the month that was essentially everything was shut down, with the exception like Walmart and Home improvement. And then this year, there was a lot of stimulus money that was floating around, so we're thinking that that's the big difference, because even though last year was down a little bit, we weren't down a whole lot, this is way above even twenty nineteen or previous year. So it's, hopefully, it's safe, but it's fine. The economy assumes very well here. I kind of remember that April was starting way higher than we had this thing.
Yes, yeah.
You might want to be a little cautious, because, I mean, the prices, like we'll see later on, I mean, the prices of everything is increasing substantially.
Yeah.
Interesting to watch, but way to start the year.
Is there any factors that really are critical to these use taxes that are dropping a bit?
My belief is, I mean, use taxes are so construction-dependent, and although it's down significantly from the previous year that month, if you look, it's really, that's more of a normal line, in my opinion, on where we were. I'm trying to remember, it was twenty, I forget, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen numbers are very close, the last two years, and especially the last year, you know, we were up to a hundred and forty-eight, which was not, extremely high numbers. So I, not, I mean, I didn't work in the detail of the true terms, but that must be on the more normal line.
Will the wafer tax in the future have a separate line, or will that be included in one of these?
Wafer tax.
Wafer?
It will be included in the use tax. But that isn't, that has certainly hasn't started.
That's down, yeah, I know that's down low. I bet the, yeah.
Still something to look forward to, though.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it will constantly have, have use tax.
Right.
Any other questions, Don? Keep up the good work. Are you over?
It's in the home charge. Last few pieces of paper. Thank you, Dawn. The second item we have this evening is, we would like to hear from Shannon Ramey-Troll, the Human Resources Director, a presentation regarding strategies for improvement on human resources.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Okay, so our personnel policies work session. The purpose of this work session today is to review with council, you know, what we're like, excuse me, what we're wanting to do with the personnel policies, the direction that we would like to go in and gain your support and direction as well, so that we're all on the same page going forward. And I did want to point out a little caveat to that as well. These are ideas and recommendations. We don't necessarily have everything specifically, you know, vetted out just yet, so there may be some questions that, you know, come up that we haven't quite worked out, the specific details to a specific policy, so. So what we're looking to change in the personnel policies is to update the policies to include a more friendlier, inviting tone, be a little bit more welcoming, but of course, firm where we still need to be as far as in policies with anti-harassment, discipline, termination. Broaden the language, is not paint ourselves into a corner. I've noticed when reviewing a lot of our personnel policies, it does that, doesn't really give us a lot of room to make any changes or, you know, modifications if needed to a certain area. Of course, review and ensure that all policies are up to date as far as current practice, as well as federal and state laws. We'd like to look at separating policy from procedure and creating a separate procedures manual for staff that gives, of course, a lot more detail, whereas that way we can actually make a policy manual that, instead of it being, I think it's a hundred-plus pages, again, make it more friendlier to the employees, so they can just go in and see what it is that they're looking for. And then, of course, you know, eliminate bureaucracy, where we're prudent. Policies that we would like to modify, add or add, we would like to look at updating our drug testing policy, our pre-employment background check, performance review process, like to look at making it more of a merit-based process instead of what it currently is, looking to create a pay time off policy versus having our vacations, if leave and holidays separate. And then, we would actually like to look at the addition of a volunteer off policy, which would be something that would be completely new to the city. So in regards to drug testing, what we would actually like to look to add, or change, rather, is the addition of swab testing. So what this would do is this would help with our pre-employment process, post-accident random drug testing. This, of course, would not include our CDL drivers, because they are, you know, have separate requirements that a swab test wouldn't necessarily be prudent for. This will help us speed up, hopefully, our hiring process. Right now, some of the things that we're looking at is that, you know, the timeframe between an employee is able to go in if there's any issues. Sometimes weather-related issues can cause, you know, specimen not to get to the testing side, you know, so we can look at anywhere from sometimes five to fourteen days to get drug testing results back on a new hire. Limit the time spent in the doctor's office for any non-medical post-accident testing, and of course, limit the employees' time away from work during our random screenings. We do do those quarterly, and we usually test about twenty employees at a time, and so, again, having them away from work can sometimes, you know, it takes time away from, obviously, the city and the projects that they're working on. The cost per test, if we choose to go in this direction, would be reduced. Currently, for a drug test, we're looking at anywhere from forty-one to forty-five dollars. I've been able to price a couple of different swabbing options, and they're anywhere from about ten to twelve dollars per test. And then, of course, if an employee does test positive, you know, we wouldn't necessarily base it off the swab test, we would take the step, have them go for a urine drug screening before we made any employment decision. Pre-employment background checks. So currently, what our process is to date is we utilize a few different sites, MOC, which is through the Missouri Highway Patrol, CASENET, and as well as our insurance broker provides our motor vehicle reports for us. Missouri Highway Patrol is only able to give us information that, of course, is Missouri-based, as well as CASENET. The other concern with CASENET sometimes is that it can be seen as unreliable, because you're usually doing a name search, it's not necessarily based off a social security number or date of birth. So, you know, as we all know, some people have similar names, same names, and it's hard to really kind of differentiate if you're looking at CASENET. And then, our MVR results are currently not actually provided to us. Typically, what we receive from our insurance carrier is whether a driver is acceptable or not, which can cause actually some issues or pose some issues for us when it comes to the Fair Reporting Credit Act, so. So what we would like to propose or recommend moving forward is looking to expand our background check option. So currently, for the process that I just described, we're paying fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents. If we went ahead and went with a more extensive background check that includes all of this, so social security number check, nationwide criminal check, government watch list, national sex offender registry, county and federal criminal check, the cost of the background check would go up basically fifty percent to thirty dollars and fifty cents a check. Now, that doesn't include the cost of the MVR, which unfortunately, there's a whole sheet on it. It varies by state, so each state depends on what the cost is. To run an MVR for the state of Missouri is five dollars, but it can be anywhere from five dollars to thirteen dollars, depending on the state. And then, some background check companies do actually give you the optional monitoring of MVRs for your CDL drivers. So that way, if, you know, your CDL driver has some sort of an incident during the year prior to you checking the actual MVR on them, it'll notify you to let you know that, hey, there's been an incident, you may want to review it, or your CDL driver no longer has a valid license. Our performance review process, as mentioned, we'd like to look at going more towards a merit-based system. We do know that currently, either way, we need to update our evaluation process and our forms to more of a user-friendly for not only the manager, but also for the employee. Currently, right now, for all of our employees, we have one evaluation form. I would like to look at us having at least a minimum of three. In my opinion, when it comes to employee evaluations, it's not a, you know, one-size-fits-all. You need some criteria specifically for managers, specifically for your professional workforce, and then, of course, your, you know, your field personnel, all need to, you know, look at having different criteria. As mentioned, of course, by moving towards a more merit-based system, we believe this would allow the department heads a little bit more flexibility to be able to properly incentivize our high performers. So a couple of potential options that we would like to just throw out there, discuss, is starting with our non-public safety employees, there's, you know, a separate group of employees or general employees. We would like to look at maintaining our current men and max on our pay plan and allowing department heads, like I said, the flexibility to win hiring based on qualifications, or performance adjust pay accordingly, of course, while all taking into consideration budget requirements and restrictions. Our pay time off, look at merging sick leave, vacation, as well as holidays on the one accrual. We believe that this would allow for some more flexibility when it comes to utilizing leave for employees, potentially give a little bit more of a better work-life balance. It would give employees that are required to work holidays the option to either observe a different holiday or observe a different day, or if you have an employee that would rather, you know, observe a different holiday, it would give them that option to do so. Look at the potential to cash in, have cash-in options, or lifting maximum accruals, and it rewards our dependable employees. I mean, we all know that, you know, some employees are very fortunate and never get sick, or their kids never get sick, and so this would give them a little bit more time to utilize, you know, somewhere else for vacations or mental health days. And this would hopefully avoid the user-lose mentality, but of course, again, to make sure we have that work-life balance, we would encourage employees to utilize their time off, as we know that time away from work is important. And then, last but not least, look at the potential of a volunteer off policy. This would give employees the option to take a set amount of time off, whether it's, we determine it's a day, half a day, a couple of days, to work on an annual basis to volunteer for either a credible charity that we outline, or a city-sponsored charity or event. This policy has the potential to attract and retain employees that are very passionate about giving back to our community. It allows employees, again, that work-life balance that everybody is really, really looking to have, and it also allows employees to engage in the local community and participate in the social good. What questions or comments does anybody have?
I don't have any questions. I'd like to put you forward this presentation to our audience.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Good ideas.
Thank you.
Comfortable with the direction?
Yeah, I think part of those discussions came up when we, in January, when we, last two years, was kind of leaning towards this merit thing that we've been kind of abandoning a lot, quite a lot, so. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so last item that I have tonight is an ordinance approving the sale of real estate between the city of Sedalia and Farnell Investments, two oh two through two ten South Ohio, and a portion of two oh one South Osage. And we talked about this a lot, I think, and I think this is an awesome project. As for the public-private partnership agreement adopted in April, hazard to the portion of the properties at Second Ohio are to be transferred to Farnell Investments. The due diligence period called for in the agreement has run a course with the survey and title insurance being a pain. So the next step is to issue the deed. Staff recommends approval of a specific ordinance to approve the conveyance of title for reporting with the deed. We're excited to push this project forward and get construction started as soon as possible on this pavilion, outdoor maintenance, and the adjacent shelter with Rutherford. As we discussed, this would be an important piece to the continued development of our downtown district, and through the partnership, we will be able to spread tax dollars further, providing more benefit to the public.
Point clarification for the benefit of the public. Farnell and Company will be paying property tax on the property as well as the improvements, correct?
Yes, it will be, right now, it's city held, so it's tax exempt. As soon as it transfers ownership, it becomes private ownership, so they will subject these properties.
Right.
And I beg to clarify, if you kind of did announce, it was a fairly significant amount of money that we've recovered from that. All for the ordinance, please.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash ninety-two. An ordinance approving the sale of real estate between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and Farnell Investments Incorporated, a Missouri corporation doing businesses with Farnell Companies, for the sale and disposal of property located at two oh two to two ten South Ohio Avenue and a portion of two oh one South Osage Avenue in the city of Sedalia, Missouri, including the approval of a special warranty deed.
Second. All fair?
Aye.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash ninety-two. An ordinance approving the sale of real estate between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and Farnell Investments Incorporated, a Missouri corporation doing businesses with Farnell Companies, for the sale and disposal of property located at two oh two to two ten South Ohio Avenue and a portion of two oh one South Osage Avenue in the city of Sedalia, Missouri, including the approval of a special warranty deed.
All fair?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
And Lehman?
Yes.
That's seven yes and one absent.
Next, Rand. Public Works, I'm told.
We have four items tonight under the Public Works Committee. Our first item is, as presented in the strategic plan for the water department, the water filtration plant utilizes a filtration media that is at the end of its useful life. Explicitly, our Missouri Department of Natural Resources' public drinking water permit requires replacement of this filtration media every twenty years. Through the budgeting process, staff obtained estimated pricing to base the appropriation on. However, as with several items, costs have unexpectedly increased dramatically. This results in the lowest bid for the delivered and installed product being nearly fifty thousand dollars above the capital budget designated for this project. Since this remains an essential part of the system to provide safe and clean water, staff recommends we still need to move forward. Therefore, we recommend a budget amendment to increase the budget for this project to bring the one hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted up to the low bid of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-four cents, and award the contract to such low bid. Being that this is a budget amendment, we will have a resolution and an ordinance for the budget amendment, and then we will have a second ordinance for the agreement.
All right, will you bring the resolution, please?
Yes, Resolution nineteen twenty-nine. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Sedalia, Missouri, authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two relating to water treatment plant filter media replacement project.
Motion to approve. Second.
All fair?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So, all right, reading ordinance?
Yes, the first one is bill number twenty dash ninety-one dash ninety-three. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two regarding water treatment plant filter media replacement project.
Second reading.
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
All for?
Bill number twenty ninety-one dash ninety-three. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two regarding water treatment plant filter media replacement project.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss? Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
That's seven yes and one absent.
All right, you read second ordinance, please.
Bill number twenty dash twenty-one dash ninety-four. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for water filtration plant media replacement.
Second reading.
Second.
All fair? Opposed?
Bill number twenty dash twenty twenty-one dash ninety-four. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for water filtration plant media replacement.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bogus is absent. Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
The second item we have tonight is a bid in agreement with FTC Equipment LLC. The water filtration plant providing drinking water to the community utilizes several high-volume pumps. One of these pumps is currently down and another showing signs of beginning to fail. Replacement of these two pumps was anticipated through the budgeting process and funds were set aside in the capital budgets for such replacement. The low bid came in at $10,801, above the $130,000 budgeted amount. In this case, staff has identified another project that can be delayed to redirect the funding from that project to stay within the total capital budgeted line item. Last meeting, as you recall, council formally rejected the bids of water analyzer replacements that were budgeted at $12,000. So redirecting these funds will cover the shortfall to facilitate moving forward with the replacement of these pumps. As you may recall, the sole bid for the water analyzer equipment was unacceptable since it was not compatible with the rest of our system. We can and will continue to assure the safety of the water using existing water analyst equipment. Staff recommends approval and award a contract to FTC Equipment LLC for $140,801 to replace pumps identified as number four and number five.
Council discussion. Reading the ordinance, please, already?
Bill number 2021-95, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for the replacement of high-service pumps four and five for the Water Division.
Second reading.
Second.
One favor.
All right.
Close.
Bill number 2021-95, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for the replacement of high-service pumps four and five for the Water Division.
Final passage. Second.
More calls, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
And Bogus is absent, so that's seven yes and one absent.
Our third item is for the Autumn Street Extension Survey. Staff has identified an opportunity for road improvement in the area of the Hecarri Community Center development. Autumn Avenue is a short street that runs from Liberty Park Boulevard to Spring Street, serving only the dozen or so residents on it. Furthermore, neither of these connected streets are through-streets. It is just a short distance along Liberty Park Boulevard to Limit Avenue or Park Avenue. However, during the Hecarri Community Center construction, access to Limit has been restricted. Likewise, we certainly anticipate an increase in the activity going to and from the Hecarri Community Center when it opens. In looking for opportunities for improvement, we identified that Autumn is directly in line with the drive entrance for engineering survey and services. Therefore, staff reached out to ESNS to see if they would be willing to work with us to explore options of extending Autumn to connect with Main Street. We worked with them to obtain a proposal to pull this project together for further review. So staff recommends approval of the proposed agreement for surveying and engineering services for the extension of Autumn Avenue to Main Street.
Council discussion. So what I understand is that road is complete, Autumn to Main Street, they're able to build houses on the east side? What's the zoning?
On the east side of Autumn?
Yeah. You're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, that's, what is that, that's the?
That's, that's.
I guess, I mean, I guess the potential is they could, back here, if they could sell off part of that lot and build a house there. I know of no plans.
Yeah.
I believe it will be declared behind it and next road as a buildable area, but currently it's ESNS that has that access to it.
And I'm not sure, it's probably the diesel, so that's up. That was one of their terms was to be able to build if they wanted to build on or add to their building, that if we weren't planned, then our district. And the same is true on the east side with the bed. But I don't know, zoning on that, I'm not clear about that.
Yeah, then east side, I mean, the road would be essentially all on the current ES block, so it really wouldn't affect this lot at all.
Thank you. You know something we don't know? Or you're just?
Are you going to tell me?
Or are you speculating?
Are you going to tell me something like that?
No, I don't know what this is. Any other questions? Reading the ordinance, please, already?
Bill number 2021-96, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for engineering and survey services for a residential roadway extension.
Second reading.
Second. One favor. Close.
Bill number 2021-96, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for engineering and survey services for a residential roadway extension.
Final passage.
Second.
More calls, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus is absent, and Richardson?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
Our final item for Public Works is a no-charge change order for Flynn Drilling Company. During the May 17 meeting, we approved an agreement with Flynn Drilling Company for the rehabilitation of the pump in Water Well Number 15. As the contractor started work on this system, they made a recommendation to install a more common submersible pump instead of rehabilitating the shaft-style pump. The submersible pump is an off-the-shelf type item that is more readily available, reducing the lead times and making ongoing maintenance more economical. The current style requires a custom-made component that are not produced until order creating six to eight week lead times after determining what is needed. Especially during these difficult and unreliable times of procurement, it would be prudent to avoid these specialized components where feasible. The contractor has put a proposal together to replace the current pump equipment with a submersible pump within the same cost as they bid for the rehabilitation of the old pump. With a shorter lead time, the vendor will be able to complete the job sooner to get this important piece of water delivery system back in service prior to the anticipated peak demand of the summer, so staff recommends approval of the change order.
Kelly, as my understanding, then we're going to eventually convert to start something?
Yes, we want to do this wherever possible as these old, what's it, 1958 pump or something like that, it's an old pump, so as these come down, we'd like to do this, which would make it a whole lot more manageable, I guess, as going forward, because then we could have a submersible pump on the shelf, so to speak, and when one goes down, we can just basically plug and play and go on. What did I miss there?
I think it's green orders, like it's throw stuff at it.
So, and basically reduce the lead times, get things more standardized, and so we can have common parts and those kinds of things in inventory on hand.
Any other? I miss anything, Brenda?
Will the four and five that we just mentioned in the second item, will those have submersible pumps as well?
No, those are different kinds of pumps.
Those are different altogether, okay.
Those are what they call high-volume or high-service pumps that are above ground, they're basically the pumps that through the filtration plant, as opposed to this is a submersible pump in the well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All ready, reading the ordinance, please?
Bill number 2021-97, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for a submersible pump installation located at Water Well Number 15.
Second reading. Second.
One favor. Close.
Bill number 2021-97, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for submersible pump installation located at Water Well Number 15.
Final passage.
Second.
More calls, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
Thank you. Thomas?
That's all I have, thank you.
Andrew, the development?
The ordinance you have before you, amends Chapter 10, Articles 10 dealing with property maintenance, and Articles 11 dealing with dangerous buildings and conditions. Over the past couple of months, Community Development Committee with the city attorney, prosecutor, and staff have gone through those, kind of taken a hard look at them and seen where we could streamline the process, add clarity, remove some circular language, and remove the variability, so everything's kind of consistent. So I'm going to go through the admin memo and just take these bullet point by bullet point, A through M, and just read them here. Yard growth shall be maintained at less than six inches, previously eight, often with the current level set at eight inches. By the time we provide the necessary notice period, schedule abatement, and get the property mowed, it is in essence out of control, making it difficult to mow, and even after it is mowed, it looks bad. Further, through this process, we've learned that for those that we unfortunately have to mow multiple times in a season, we have to provide a 10-day notice period each time it is mowed, by reducing the height at which we start the process, which will help in these situations. And then B, which is in relation to that, related to the above discussion, we reduce the notice period before we can start the abatement process from 15 days to 10, which is in accordance with the statutes. Further, the notice period is not required for the issuance of a citation or violation just the abatement process. Bullet point C, added sections to prohibit odors, stenches, require the appropriate disposal of dead animals, and prohibit water pollution. D clarifies and codifies the process for sending an invoice to the property owner for the cost of the abatement. E clarifies the use of proactive measures for achieving compliance. If you looked at our code of ordinances before this, it called out to where everything was basically, our code enforcement was reactive. You can't do that, that doesn't work. You have to do combined proactive and reactive code enforcement to have any type of, make any type of difference out there. Let's see, let me get back on point F, clarifies and standardizes the notice and abatement process. G, the definition of what constitutes a public nuisance structure was modified for when construction is stopped for more than 30 days, subsequent to notice being given, reduced from 90. Also, when a building has been condemned as unfit for human habitation upon which no substantial work has been performed to remedy the situation for 14 days, subsequent to notice being given, reduced from 90. H, clarified and eliminated circular reference in the notice requirements for declaration of a public nuisance structure. I changed and clarified the process for service for notification of dangerous buildings process. Provides options for personal service or certified mail. Clarifies, streamlines, and shortens the notice publication process, previously required four weeks of publication of full text of the violation with notice of hearing not less than 45 days after publication. State statute only requires the publication of the notice of hearing once with a minimum of a 10-day notice period. Reduces the time after notice of violation that a hearing can be held with the Board of Appeals from 21 days to 10 days, it's per state statute. Point K, clarifies that a court reporter for the hearings with the Board of Appeals may be used but is not required. Point L, allows staff to assist in the documentation of Board of Appeals' facts and findings. And then point M eliminates the posting requirement for the Board of Appeals' findings of facts. So that's a lot. We worked and had a lot of, spent a lot of time going round and round about that, and I think we came up to something that's reasonable for everybody.
And I appreciate your persistence and diligence, staff, great job, much needed.
Yeah.
Any other questions, the council? All ready, reading the ordinance, please?
Bill number 2021-98, an ordinance submitting Section 10, Property Maintenance, and Section 11, Dangerous Buildings and Conditions of Chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations of the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading. Second.
One favor. Close.
Bill number 2021-98, an ordinance submitting Section 10, Property Maintenance, and Section 11, Dangerous Buildings and Conditions of Chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations of the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second.
More calls, please.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
And Foster?
Yes.
Seven yes and one absent.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, please.
Okay, we have one new license this evening and six renewals. The new license is for Marceau Lima's doing business at State Fair Floral at 520 South Ohio for a packaged liquor and liquor by the drink license. The renewals are for Brent Eaton Jones doing business at Jiffy Stop Food Mart, number 591, located at 1722 West Broadway, packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Adriana Thorns doing business at Applebee's Bar and Grill at 3320 West Broadway for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. Alan Will doing business at Sedalia Elk Lodge, number 125 at 320 South Kentucky, liquor by the drink and Sunday sales license. Kathy Getz doing business at Break Time, number 3083, at 808 East Broadway for a Sunday sales license. Kathy Getz doing business at Break Time, number 3084, at 318 West Broadway for Sunday sales license. And Kathy Getz doing business at Break Time, number 3079, 2801 West Broadway for Sunday sales.
Motion to approve, is locked. Second.
One favor.
All right.
Close. Anybody from the council who wants to make a few comments today? Kelly?
Well, first of all, I just wanted to make sure everybody has a happy and safe Fourth of July, and just kind of given a little bit of a preview, we are, as you all know, we've worked on the branding and getting our story put together and those kinds of things, so we have worked with Talisman Associates and the Parks and Rec Department, and we're working on essentially trying to push that project forward and do a little bit of splash or start getting the story out there during two pretty important events coming up, the fourth, first of all, Independence Day, the Fourth of July celebration, and the picnic at the park, so to speak, as well as the state fair. So got things coming up for that, and just wanted to kind of get everybody's proof or teach a little bit to get out there and see what's going on.
Change the response for the parade.
Hold it back?
Change the response for the parade.
There's just air in the parade.
Also, we have to make it at the park. We all need volunteers, so usually a lot of city council comes out and volunteers.
You cooking?
A lot of the county.
Are you going to cook?
Yeah, I usually do that kind of stuff.
You and I.
Okay.
Sushi? Hot dogs, chips, pop, peanuts, even have sushi if you want.
I should be raw hot dogs.
Well, Gil Lee wasn't one of these fat soakers going to his family, if they can have a cent. Is that right, Gil Lee? We'd like, I just take a comment that we had a great event, student team celebration in other park. Council Andrew and his group did a great job. I see, I saw Phil came in and split the public light. He had a good, it's a good day in, I understand. People are there with his proof, the fire. The fire, Steve was there. Uh, the park park, Steve there, once, that's okay.
We had some great basketball that evening, too.
Did you hear this, Julie?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Parkland race.
Do you have that on film?
I missed that.
Oh, you know, I'd have to charge you.
Flashback, open, it's been a great event, flashback.
That flashback movie phenomenal.
At the Pinkhead at the park, we would like someone to volunteer stakes for the health.
Thanks for the health, you're volunteering that, though?
I'll volunteer.
Good luck, my man. Anybody in front of the audience want to make a few kind words?
Well, Noah's coming forward.
You got nothing else, Paul? Are you going to say hello?
Didn't touch that stuff. Thank you.
I'm sure everybody knows Mr. Cool.
First, I would like to apologize, I would just got a, addressed. One of the gentleman said he did not recognize me without my suit on. To our Honorable Mayor, to the members of the city council and all friends that are here, whether Mercosur, Soudaya, and those that are interested, I stand before you tonight, especially you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, and to any of the members of the Park and Recreation Committee, if you are here this evening, to personally thank you for your donations, for your time, for your opportunity to help celebrate the Juneteenth celebration. Soudaya made history, Saturday. That was the first Juneteenth celebration after the signing of the bill. So, I want to personally acknowledge each and every one of you for being there, for coming out, for being involved. Want to also thank our police department, fire department, uh, I believe representatives, uh, from the, the commission, I believe, commission, I believe, was there. And there were others there. I might be getting, forgetting some that, that, that attended, but in all in all, it was a great celebration. I think each and every one of you enjoyed being there with us. And to, I just want to say to you, we're looking to be, become bigger and better because the more we work together, the better we will improve our city of Soudaya. And we will, we will all grow as one. So, I thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn the closed-door session in accordance to subsections one, legal advice, and subsection two, real estate.
Second.
Aye.
Roll call, please, Allay.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Liz?
Yes.
Say goodbye, Sarah, please.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'm up.
Hey.
Uh, where's the pink hat?
I, she took it back. She wanted the closed session and I wouldn't let her.
Go back into regular session.
That was her.
Roll call, please.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus is absent. Um, Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
And Liz?
Here.
Okay, uh, staff recommends that, uh, uh, we reject all of the three proposals that were due for the, as a result of our request for proposals for the sale of 111 West Fourth Street. Uh, it's also known as the old Water Department Office Building. And, uh, so, staff is making that recommendation to reject all of it.
Motion to reject any and all bids for the West Fourth.
Second.
Whatever that address turns out, properties.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Lehman?
Do you need a roll call on that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, favor?
Aye.
Polls? Motion passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call, please.
All right.
You actually don't even have to be a vote on that.
I'd just like to do that.
Oh, okay. You're the boss.
Bye, Steve.
See you, guys.
Have a great vacation.
I am. We have, we're having fun. See you later.
I polled all the care.
This conference will now be recorded.
I think John was getting a lick in, but I missed it. I'll get even when I get home.